Evening everyone and welcome to the January City Council for the city of Waynesville. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Hardeman.
Here.
Councilwoman Fulbert.
Here.
Councilwoman Davis.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Curtis.
Here.
Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Liberty.
Here.
Councilman Connolly.
Here.
Councilman France. Thank you.
Very good and thank you all. Would you join me as Councilman Curtis says an invocation and...
If you would join me in prayer. Lord God, we come to you this evening, Lord, we come to you as humble people, Lord. As we make decisions for our city, Lord, you just watch over each of our decisions. God, we ask you to be with those that are lonely, those that are hurting, and those that are sick. Let us reach out to those people and give them comfort. God, we give you praise, honor, and glory this evening in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I did kinda say I hope that I don't cough very much. Before we get started, I want to say a big thank you to our TV crew from Channel 12. And they are here like they are most, most every month. And Mr. Wallace is up there somewhere. He, there he is waving at me. And tonight we have Garrett. We have AJ. And up in the video nest, we have Drayden. And I want to thank you guys for everything that you do for us. And would also like to announce that if you're watching us on Facebook Live, hello on Facebook. We are really proud to be streamed live on Facebook for the first time. And also announce that if you missed that meeting, missed our meeting tonight on Channel 12, you can also find it on the Waynesville Channel 12 YouTube channel. And we're over on the right and you can click on that. So, thank you guys for all you've done for us. It is great. We have, first of all, our consent agenda. We have noticed that we have a special meeting that we had in December because we had canceled our regular. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Very good. And all those in favor? And that unanimous. The only thing that I would like to remove is under Special Guest, Katie Pritchard will not be able to be here tonight because she's a basketball coach and her team is in a tournament. And so she will be with us as soon as she can schedule that. And also, before we get started, I want to say just a couple of things. And as I can already tell, I think I may by the end of the night lose my voice. So I apologize again for that. First of all, for the city, we want to say welcome back to Michelle Brown. Michelle has had surgery recently and we missed her and we're really glad she's here. And then, as most of you know, yesterday was the deadline for signing up for office in the city of Waynesville. I want to announce publicly that there was no one who signed up in Ward 1. And because of that, I will be making an appointment in that ward. And I would be very open to suggestions, people who are interested in that seat. City council people, if there's somebody that you know that might be interested. And while I'm on that topic, I believe we have someone signed up for all the other wards. I want to say to Cheryl how much I appreciate you, not only as a friend, but as a city council person who two years ago stepped up when we, when we needed you. And you stepped up and did that and we appreciate it. We appreciate your service. And Alan's not here tonight. Guess he's got the flu. We don't want him here if he's got the flu. Alan has been a longtime partner for the city of Waynesville and we were, we're going to miss him also. And he is also retiring from city council. So we're, with the April election, we'll have some new faces on the city council. So again, thank you Cheryl. And thank you Alan, if you're watching us. At this time, we have some certificates of appreciation. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Nikki Brown and Erin to come up. And I believe, you, you want to just go ahead and do it yourself and I'll stand to the side? Okay. Guys, these are certificates of appreciation for the sports program. And could you maybe, are these people who sponsored shirts?
It's a variety. You may have sponsored a child for a season that gives them the chance to be able to play, who may not have been able to afford it otherwise.
Oh, okay.
It could be gear for a specific sport. It could be shirts for a team. In which case you'll see a logo on the back of shirts every once in a while and that, that person stepped up and they gave us a chance to give those kids some shirts that are nice and personalized.
That is very, very nice. And you know, I had actually one time at one of the meetings, and I don't believe it was you, that I said, "I would be glad to sponsor a kid." And so would you make sure that I get...
I will.
A note about that and I would be glad to sponsor a kid. So, we're going to call you up one at a time, but if you would stay up here and we'll just take a group shot, okay? And the first one on my list is my friend David Tritton from the Bank of Iberia. And we have a present for you too. David is from the Bank of Iberia and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it David. Have a little present for you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Dan Cordova. His wife Carla is not here, but of course she's always involved. Chief, we appreciate you helping our kids. And from Infused Credit Union, my old student friend, Jason Mills. Good job Jason. Appreciate you guys. Very good. And from US Patriot, and I don't know her name, do you? Leah? Very good. Come on up Leah. Again, thank you so very much.
Yes ma'am, my pleasure.
We appreciate it. Appreciate you being involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I have a hand for these guys? I will also tell you that there's a whole page of these people. And we will make sure they get their certificates. How many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So if everybody kinda get in a little bit? Maybe, maybe two of them go on the side? There we go. There we go, that'll work. Oh, that was good. I like it.
Mutus brasus.
That is great.
Thank you all. Thank you. Okay, that made my whole night Amber. That was for the chief. Okay. The next thing on our agenda, of course, is citizens' comments. And if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council, this would be the time to do that. Seeing none, we'll move on. And we'll have our board reports. And our first one is Park Board and my friend Sean Wilson, who has also announced his candidacy for Ward 3 on city council.
Good afternoon. The Park Board meeting from January 9th. The board began at 6:00, 6:00 PM and we, we ended at about 7:15. It was a pretty lengthy board meeting. It was, there were no board in December because of the holiday. But we came back, pretty much focused on this year to try to get some things done. We had two board members that were, that were not, that were not there. But they all contacted us and let us know that it was okay. We didn't have any visitors. Our sports program, Ms. Brown showed up to our meeting for the first time. She, she came in and kinda got a feel of how we, we operate and function our meeting. She brought a lot of great information from the last year, just to give you a couple of notes over the sports. From the last winter sports, there was an increase of thirty-five participants within the program. This year was a hundred and thirty-four, the previous year was ninety-nine that participated during the winter sports. So we seen an increase there. Also, I wanted to announce the January, or the spring sports registration. January, January fourteenth to February twenty-second will be the registration period for the spring sports. And that would include cheerleading, track, volleyball, and of course soccer. The ages for the soccer are three to fifteen. Cheerleading is five to twelve. Volleyball is seven to fifteen. And track will be five to twelve. The soccer games will be strictly between WSR and Fort Littlewood population. And we would host most of those games off the installation, so we shouldn't have any major issues. Sponsorships, she has a, the sports director has raised eighteen, eighteen hundred and sixty-one dollars of sports sponsorship. We also talked about helping out. We got a couple of people from the board that are actually also gonna add to that, that total. So we should, we should see an increase by the next meeting with the reports. So she's doing an outstanding job with that as far as continuing that on so she can get a replacement equipment, things like that. And if anybody desires to make a donation, then I would just say just meet Ms. Brown at her office here at the Waynesville headquarters and make your contributions there and it'll be greatly appreciated. The park superintendent reports, of course, he's doing a lot of work in the park in preparation for the spring. He's, he's painting and, and kinda renewing a lot of the equipment. He didn't, he didn't say there was any issues, any major concerns. Just taking signs down, repainting them, doing a lot of cleanup. Trying to do some outside work when weather permits and, but just mainly try to get everything in order for the spring. There weren't any... Under the new business, we had, we formally welcomed the new board member, Mr. Malidi. And he, he was happy to be on the team. I actually took him out on the following day and took him on a tour of all of the parks. So that's one of the introductory things. We kinda go through a in-process and stage and let him know what our, our area of operation is and so that he can get a greater understanding of what we do here as a total park team. He was assigned the RV park as his area responsibility. And we kinda lined out some duties and maybe getting some ideas from the local people that are participating there. Get this, Mr. Brown. We, we did a walkthrough at Summit Park. Last year, we had a meeting in the Summit community. And it was in relation to a new equipment that was requested. So myself and Mr. Brown went up to do like a recon of, you know, exactly how much space we're looking at for the items of equipment that they requested, which was mainly toddler type activity apparatuses, if you wanna call it that. But, so we're looking at swings and we're looking at some kind of, not jungle gyms, but those tubes they crawl through. But there's several different types that you can use. So what we're doing now, the, the park board members are all bringing in their ideas. We told them the amount that we're trying to stick with. And we're gonna, we're gonna kinda solicit what's the best equipment. And we're getting the three recommended organizations to purchase that equipment from to get the best price. So we will have that sometime between now and the next meeting. We will transfer information over internet, email, to kinda keep everybody abreast of what's going on. So we'll have that hammered out at the next meeting. We talked a little bit about missed board meetings. That was one of the issues that we saw last year that we need to get better at this year, is participation so that we can continue to move forward with our business. We had some recommendations of alternate means to make sure we always have a quorum. So we're still working those things out. Just kinda gave, you know, just stuck it out there as an idea. And come back the next week and we're gonna finalize some things. But just give them some time to kinda think about it a little before we put it on paper and say this is the way we're gonna do it. So that's, that's one of the reasons why the board was a little bit longer than normal. We didn't have any updates on the parks, of course, it's during the wintertime. There are no events coming up in January, of course. Nobody wants to go swimming or play in the park for some reason. Again, I said the, the meeting was adjourned at 7:15. Our next scheduled meeting is on February fourteenth. We do realize that that's Valentine's Day. But I guess I asked everyone on the board, "Are you gonna be here? Are you okay?" You know, if you're not gonna be here, it's, it's fine. If, if someone comes back because their significant other had plans, then we will just fire them. We don't want anybody getting in trouble. But for right now, it's scheduled for February fourteenth at 6:00 PM.
Very good.
Right. Are there any questions? It's gonna be here.
Cause it's cold.
Only when it's, when it's springtime, the weather starts to be better, then we'll go out to the parks. We'll get back out there this week.
So I was going to comment, and now I lost my train of thought. Oh, about your park day. Kids in the park day.
Kids in the park day.
I actually had someone write me the other day and ask me about that.
Okay.
And I would tell you, if you would write me up a little blurb, I'd be glad to post that on the city page.
Okay.
And kinda encourage some people, like the organizations and...
Yeah, and I, and we will more than likely have a coordination meeting coming up in, before the end of this month. I kinda been touching bases with a lot of the organizations independently.
Who's your partner in that? Is it the extension?
Part, well, it's, it's a lot of different organizations.
Okay, okay. Not just one?
No, it's not just one. But the extension office will, will participate. We have a couple of churches that's gonna participate. And we have Outlaw RC that's gonna participate.
Oh, good.
So we're, we're trying to bring a lot of other equipment.
The remote control car thing was still on their, you know, their schedule. And I think your plan is to kinda see what kind of response you have to that.
Right. Before we make a decision on putting the park, putting it in the park, if nobody want, is interested in it or...
Right.
I don't think that's the way we need to go. But this will be the opportunity to see how many people are actually really interested in the, the remote control park track.
Remind everybody that Saturday, I know Chief Cordova was involved, is involved in this. But on Saturday, there is a Tiger Nation basketball game at five o'clock at city hall. And a lot of these guys that are playing on this team are former standouts at Waynesville High School. In fact, I have many up in school. And I, I think you would really see some great basketball. Bring your kids over there. They're also having a clinic that day and it's very cheap, it's like five dollars. Oh, no, it's no cost?
No clinic.
No clinic? Okay. Just the game at five o'clock. Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions for Sean?
We're here, we're gonna hold him back.
I haven't neglected to make contact.
Okay.
But I will. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you Sean.
Thank you.
Guys, we did not have, I don't even know if my mic's on. Is it on Tim?
Did you click it?
Uh-huh. I, we did not have a planning and zoning committee meeting again this month. We just don't have any business. And so we feel like, I have a meeting if you don't have any business. But I will tell you that we have new members on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in February, we do plan to have a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting to kinda go over projects, go over updates, introduce the new people to, to the commission. So kinda keep that in mind if you're interested in attending. Okay, standing committee reports, roads and grounds. And Councilman Clark is not here. Who else is on that committee? Clarence, give us the short, sweet version.
Councilman Brown sat in for Councilman France, who was unable to attend. We discussed a drainage issue in Woodland Hill. There was... About that. And Mr. Harold said, secondary lines are reformally property owned. But we are researching on, see if we can do like a cost share or something to help them out. Recreational Trail Grant. The city is in the process of filling out the NEPA review. And they found out we needed ar- archaeological survey as well as endangered species review. So they're working on that at this time. Two thousand nineteen proposed project. Mr. Harold stated that our CIP plan is overlay schedule for GW Lane, Swayburg, Collier, and Wildwood for two thousand nineteen. He also advised that our current budget only has a hundred and twenty thousand. And the projects will cost a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So we will probably have to make some adjustments there. Street updates. Brian Adams went over projects, streets were doing. Conclude culverts on Swayburg Road. They swept leaves, cleaned ditches and culverts. And removed gravel from the streets. There was a need for closed session. Councilman Brown made a motion, enter into closed session. Councilman Connolly seconded. Motion passed in the committee. We went into closed session at four forty-seven. We came out at four fifty. And having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at four fifty.
That was a very fast executive session. Three minutes. Is that a record? I think that's a record. As most, all of you know, in city council, because I've been talking about it for a week, we did finally get permission for our GW Lane project.
Yeah.
And so, once the paperwork is done, which of course, we don't know what that's gonna entail, we will get that project started. You high school guys, hopefully we'll get that done when you're not in session. And get the road out there widened and some sidewalks in. And again, I also talked to OTC and they're on board, what we discussed about the sidewalks. So I think that's gonna turn into a very good project.
Yes.
You might remember, cause I do, when I first got on city council, our, our road budget was like twenty thousand dollars a year. So we have definitely made improvements there. And, am I wrong Bruce? But I think that's about right. Two thousand and three?
You, you may be close.
Yeah, that's close. So I'm real proud of that. Okay, any questions for the roads people? Yes.
Bruce, we could have Brian check out some of the cul-de-sacs on Hull Valley, Fay Court and that. I've gotten a couple of calls just today from some of the constituents up there that we have a parking problem and the pavement is really broken up as you go up those real steep hills. Where we may need to, and they're relatively short and they're also very small cul-de-sacs. That we couldn't get an emergency vehicle in there with the kids parking on the side of the streets as well as the pavement's just trashed supposedly.
Okay, we'll check into those.
Well, and, and just plowing.
Oh yeah, we can't plow.
We passed ordinances, haven't we?
Well, we passed them for certain neighborhoods. Like over there in Mr. Cox's subdivision.
But we didn't do Fay Court?
No, we just did, we did just that major neighborhood.
Well, we'll, we'll review our ordinances on cul-de-sacs and we'll look at them, especially if we might have a snow event coming this weekend.
Sure. Very good. Anything else? Okay, Mike? Utility report.
Okay. We met on January eighth. Bruce, can I speak to natural gas?
Sure.
Okay. Basically, as we've been reporting since September, well, long before that, for the past six months, natural gas, the possibility of going to fifty from twenty-two dollars per decotherm or a hundred cubic feet of natural gas for transportation, transportation of the gas to the pipeline. They wanted to go from twenty-two to fifty-two dollars for that same amount of gas to travel. We had lawyers at the FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission in Washington DC with our partners, St. Robert, St. James, Cuba. And we finally came to, and we have agreed tentatively to a rate of twenty-nine fifty, which is a pretty significant savings, over fifty-two dollars. But we have not yet seen the, all the formal documents, so there'll be... Electric consultant agreement, you'll see that you've got that to vote on later on with tow engineering. Because we found we can possibly do, gain some significant savings if we put in our own substation. Now, putting in our own electrical substation is not a, a inexpensive deal, but it will pay itself out in probably about three years for what we're paying right now. I mean, it's... So we're looking to try to save us some money. And that's what tow engineering, we're looking at doing, having them be our consultant on. You'll see an attached document that has a two thousand and nineteen project for our utilities entities. And you'll, you'll notice that it is quite a, an extensive list. And if you notice, if you come up on this intersection of sixty-six and I Court Avenue, you'll see the wellhouse there. The pump went out. I was informed, estimate somewhere seventeen thousand or below. That was not a budget item. So, that's major expenditure we had not planned on. Waste water update. Mr. Eldridge stated that his department had eight work orders, main, and a main water break behind Price Cutter that put those restaurants and that stuff out of water for a protracted period of time. So you'll see one of the projects we're looking at is looping another water system in there so we can preclude that from happening ever again. But when they dug up the pipe, it took a while to find it. And when they dug it up, they found that the pipes were offset like this. When, and they use, when they put those in, they used something to drag a pipe over. And these are eight-inch plastic pipes and to connect them. And all it did was, over the years, it just finally broke. And so we got it fixed and we fixed it the right way. So we don't anticipate any more issues with that. But that was a long, long project, pretty much all day. Gas Department, Mr. York stated his department installed three new services and doing daily maintenance. Mr. Sheldon stated his department had five outages, seven streetlight work orders, three tree work orders, installed two new services in November, installed new streetlight pole on Booker Road, and also included a report showing a total of fifty outages for two thousand and eighteen. If you'll notice, they've also, not on this report, is the, we moved the light from one side of Dollar General's driveway that kept getting knocked out by trucks that aren't supposed to come out that way. Same guys that knocked those little yellow poles off about, other week. And that one of the outages was a big and protracted outage because there was no way to get to it. We had to build a road before we could even get down to it. And so we're currently improving that road as weather permits to where we can get down there and do service on it if it ever happens again. And trimming trees. And we're gonna do some more tree trimming this year. We just finished up the last portion of our tree trimming money from eighteen. Other business, research on updated ordinance for black backflow preventers. What that does, backflow preventer will help you, if the sewer backs up, it'll keep it from backing up into your house. And there was no requirement to install those on, as part of our building codes. And we had a facility that was damaged recently by a, by a sewage backflow. And it, they had, their school went out of commission for a while for repairs and cleaning and all that stuff. We would really encourage businesses and churches and entities such as that to seriously... To seriously consider consulting with, uh, Mr. Harold and Mitch McDonald. In regard to the possibility of installing those on their facilities. Because, uh, it saves a lot of money. It saves on your insurance and everything like that. And we're looking at basically, uh, putting, putting an ordinance together that's going to require on future commercial entities at minimum.
Was new residential part of that?
Uh, we'll have to consider residential as part of that or not. Depends how far-reaching we, we'd make the ordinance. But we certainly encourage residential to have a backflow preventer. Saves a lot of hassle and time.
In fact, I want one of those.
Do ya?
Uh-huh. So do I call a plumber?
We'll, we'll bring you some information there.
Yeah, bring me some information.
Yeah, we'll bring you some information.
That's one thing I don't want in my basement.
And that's where it goes.
Yep.
Uh, basically on, uh, on that ordinance, they're bringing us more information at our next meeting. We had a couple of other ordinances from other communities and they're trying to figure out what we wanna do ultimately. Sunset water tank is online, the fence is up around it, so we're in total compliance. Our, uh, construction crew's been out there for the last couple of days putting it up, looks really good. They did a fantastic job. The Northern Heights Tank, uh, we've gone to a ground storage type tank on it. But we're right now waiting soil science, uh, and analysis to tell us how we can build a pad to support that tank. If you remember, we was gonna put a tower up there. But they wanted twenty-six pillars to go in the ground that were about three foot across. And I forget how deep they were, over twenty-some odd feet, twenty, twenty-two to twenty-five foot deep. And three foot, twenty-six of them. And then you have the pad that goes on top of them. We're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand for a pad for a four hundred thousand dollar water tower. Uh, so, we're, we looked at alternatives and we can do the same thing. We'll have a, have to do a booster pump to, uh, supplant the height it was gonna have on the water tower though. Uh, there was a necessity for a closed session. Mr. Council, uh, Connolly made the, uh, motion, I seconded, we went into it, we came out at four thirty-nine. There was no other business to be had in front of the committee, so we adjourned.
Very good. Questions for Mike, and we do have an ordinance. Can I say, uh, as the mayor, that how proud I am that we're looking into building a substation? I think, uh, it'd be a great move for our city. And, you know, even though it's expensive, I didn't realize it was gonna pay for itself that quick, so that's, uh, exciting. So we have ordinance twenty-three forty-seven, counselor?
Thank you, and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute an engineering services agreement. Between the city of Waynesville and TOE and Associates in fixing and effective date. And ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute an engineering services agreement. Between the city of Waynesville and TOE and Associates in fixing and effective date.
And I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike and second by Clarence, would meet ya. Uh, and are there any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes.
We have a cap on the not we're gonna pay this engineering firm?
Uh, not at the current time, uh, we looked at the cost. But we, we will have a, we will monitor that each time. But where it's an hourly rate and, uh, we, we checked the hourly rate with some other, uh, light firms. And it was, uh, very, uh, very cost efficient for us. But we'll monitor that on a monthly basis and keep you informed about that.
Very good. Anything else?
And once we get down to the de- design phase and other phases like that, then we would know more of a firm amount of whatever cost.
All right, Madam Clerk, what'd you call the road?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yeah.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faulkard?
Yes, thank you.
And that ordinance passes unanimously. Uh, this seems to be the Clarence and Mike show, but we do have other, uh, committees. And, uh, some of them, however, did not meet. Finance did not have a quorum this month. Uh, is there anything that you'd like to share from Finance, Mr. Harold? You, I think it was just an information meeting.
We could just, uh, review, you know, we updated, uh, at the information meeting, we updated about the year-end budget. And of course, we completed our, uh, twenty eighteen fiscal year and revenue was at ninety-four percent. And expenses were at ninety-one percent. So we ended up in good shape with a year-to-date net income of, uh, two, a little over two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Uh, largely, I don't think, uh, we're behind on both revenue and expenses, a lot of our grant projects from the airport. A half a million or so grant projects got moved from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. Because pending some approvals from Fort Leonard Wood for a fellow, parallel taxiway. So, uh, and, um, as, as January eighth, we had three point seven million in the bank. Three point one six million in reserve and restricted accounts. And, uh, one of the accomplishments of the past year on the finance side was reduced, uh, I think a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars in debt. By paying off some of the city's loans.
Very good. Very good. Okay, questions, anybody? Uh, Police Committee, Ed?
All right, we met on January the third with the usual people's friends. We had no citizens to, to, uh, appear. Went over the code book review again. And Michelle informed us that, that they had met with the people from Southern Publishing. And the city should have the final draft of our new code by the second or third week of February.
Very good.
And then we will have twenty days to review it. And then it goes back to the company for their final publishing. And we should have, uh, late May or early June to include the code book. So the people can access our city codes online.
I'm so excited. That's great.
Something that's been needed for years. Once everything is, is approved, we send off the Southern publishing. The only problem we may have down the line with the police side of it, uh, is changes in state law as to age of juveniles. And of course, the new marijuana laws will have to be addressed. But usually, because we'll have the E-code, it'd be much simpler to update. Chief gave us an update on, on, uh, his new higher officer, Bates. Who passed his field training and was doing a great job. And they also hired Officer Snyder as a part-time officer for traffic enforcement. And he's doing a great job as well. I haven't heard anything different, so I assume he's still doing a great job. And Cheryl Wilson's part-time hours would be, were increased to twelve hours a day to accommodate for administrative duties. He gave us a grant update, uh, currently used by DWI and hazardous moving group grants up. And our new traffic enforcer, Officer Snyder, is able to use extra hours on that grant with no cost considered. Grants pay full-time officers time and a half for, for the, he on the road enforcing the law. With Snyder being part-time, he, he will be paid regular hourly pay. The, uh, radio grant for twenty-four thousand dollars is now available. And we're currently, a company is currently ordering new radios. And will be coordinating installation. There was no need for closed session. We had no other business, we adjourned at three forty-six.
Very good.
It is February the seventh.
Any questions for Ed? Okay, we have the airport board, and I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder. But several of you, I believe two of you, were out at the, uh, not, not dedication, but the opening of the Contour, the announcement for the Contour Airlines. And it was a great occasion, uh, had a great, uh, response from the community, a lot of people there. Very excited about Contour Air offering jet service from Fort Leonard Wood. So when I fly to St. Louis, Cheryl, in twenty minutes, I'm there. If I'm lucky, I'll get my Coke drank, okay? Uh, we're very excited about this. And one of the things that I said out there that day was, uh, it was a hard decision for us. Because Cape Air has been such a good partner over the years. They've really been a good partner. But it was time for us to move to the next level. And the next level, of course, was jet service and going to third passengers instead of nine. So that's kind of the big, uh, event at, uh, at Cape Air. And I would remind the city council that we are going to take an inaugural flight on February twelfth.
I have tickets, young man.
Yes, and I want you to talk, the city will take, uh, take care of that and make sure everybody is taken care of. Uh, I'll talk to you afterwards, okay?
All right.
But all of you, uh, we have nine seats. So that's enough for all of us. I know some of you have jobs and you probably won't be able to go. But the gist of it is, we're going to get on the airplane about ten or so. And go to St. Louis, have a nice lunch, get on the airplane and come home.
Good way.
And so, we, really, it will just be the inaugural flight. And so, to kind of think about that. If you're interested in it, you might let Michelle or Amber know, whoever's gonna keep a list there. And I believe Dorsey Newcomb is going to be the contact person who will put all that stuff together.
That's February twelfth?
February twelfth. And again, we'll have the details for you later. But we only have nine seats.
The other thing else that you didn't mention is that if you get online and order tickets, you know when you gotta fly for like spring break or something like this? If you get your tickets purchased before, for that flight, before the twenty-seventh of this month, they're only twenty-nine bucks.
Right, each way.
From here to St. Louis.
Right.
And so you can get your to and from tickets.
Pretty cheap.
Whether you're going on cheap, less than sixty bucks.
And then the next week, they're thirty-nine, the next week, they're forty-nine. Until they get to ninety-nine, which is what Cape Air charges now. And if you're like me, you go and you travel for a week, your parking is nearly a hundred dollars. You know, not counting the gas and the four hours to get there. So, so there's much better, uh, choices. And I would tell the public, I, I don't think it is hard to get on Fort Leonard Wood. Unless you're a felon. If you're a felon, don't go to the front gate, okay? Uh, it, I, someone said to me, getting up for, on Fort Leonard Wood is probably quicker than going through TSA. In St. Louis. So, just kind of keep some of those things in mind. I will tell you that Contour does not have the baggage agreement yet, but they're working on it. Which in, I, I was kind of told, what that means is you would fly into St. Louis, you would take your bag to your next flight. You have to actually pick it up. So, uh, anyway, let's not get into all the little nitty details, but you, a lot of those details you can get on their website, Contour Airlines.
Ed, one thing I'd like to say though, is if you're a civilian, alls you need to do is, you have to go to the main gate.
Right.
Don't go to any other gates. But the main gate where they have the visitor's center, that's where you wanna go. Have a picture ID, have insurance for your car and that kind of basic documents. And go in there and you can get in. And you can also, they said, go online and do a lot of the paperwork, so you do your check. And then you show up with your ID and that's it.
So you don't have to wait?
Yeah, you don't have to wait near as long to get in on post.
Right. And, and again, I, it's easy for me, of course, I'm the mayor, so maybe there's a little bit of things different with me. But people tell me it takes about ten minutes, ten, fifteen minutes usually. Okay, I stole all your thunder.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Bruce, are you going to talk or Cecil?
Uh, I'll, I'll talk about this one.
Okay.
Uh, of course, we had the meeting on the twenty-sixth, uh, we talked about our new airport manager, Mr. Michael Kyle.
Oh yeah.
And we approved a new budget at that meeting. And reported about fuel sales and fuel sales were going, uh, a hundred and five, in November, were a hundred and five percent over projections. So that's as good, we're selling more fuel than we anticipated during last year. So, uh, that's the way we generate some funds to support the airport. We talked about the new truck, which is in process of, uh, um, getting built and getting ordered for us. Uh, we, uh, many, uh, we, uh, talked about the parallel taxiway. We're still waiting on approval for Fort Leonard Wood to get a new lease agreement so we can, uh, work on the parallel taxiway. So we hope we ha- we hope we complete that in the January timeframe. We also talked about the temporary terminal project, uh, SOP gave an update on the marketing report for the airport. Talked about the, the potential of charter flights, wasn't, uh, the, uh, financially feasible at this time, but we're still, uh, continuing to work on that. So that's kind of a brief overview of what we talked about at the airport meeting.
Very good. Mike?
Did we get the truck, uh, issue resolved?
No, we're still working on that.
Okay.
And boy, are those trucks expensive?
Yep.
I had no idea how much. But they are expensive. Okay, any questions, anybody else? All right, our last, uh, meeting, uh, meeting report is, uh, from Councilwoman Faulkard, Economic Development.
Okay, we met on January eighth, we did have one guest, but no guest comments. We talked about the proposed twenty nineteen projects. And one of them is, we want to address some of the chronic abatement areas. Another item that we want to do is to continue advertising our industrial park with signage and marketing. We also are looking to change the square to a one-way.
Just looking.
Uh, we do have some research that needs to be done on that. Uh, we also talked about upcoming events, which we have the polar meltdown chili cook-off on January nineteenth. And the city has their own team, the Waynesville Chili Chicks.
Yeah.
I thought it was Mr. Harold, Bob, Mr. Harold and the City.
And Bruce, Bruce is with the chicks.
Waynesville Chili Chicks.
Chili chicks. But now, counsel, you know, the people who always win, they stack the deck, so to speak. So if any of you have a ten-dollar bill or a twenty-dollar bill that you want to give me. I'm gonna take my little twenty-dollar bill, put it in the little pot. And hopefully, we will get some of those, uh, what do they call, people's choice awards or whatever.
Yeah.
So if you have any money you wanna donate to the Waynesville Chili Chicks, be sure and give it to me.
And if anyone's interested in attending.
We blew the whole plan, though.
I know.
I'm gonna go down there and eat chili tomorrow.
If anyone's interested in attending, it's going to be at the Arc this year.
Oh.
Yes.
I'm glad you said that.
Uh, the other thing is, we have the community leadership banquet on February eighth. And our own Mayor Hardman has been nominated for Citizen of the Year.
Yay, yay, you're here.
Uh, other business, we talked about, uh, we're going to start doing Facebook spotlights for, uh, a different business.
Very good.
Uh, there was a need for a closed session, we went into closed session at five oh nine and came out at five twenty-two. And our next meeting will be on February fifth.
And I do think the, the, uh, chamber, community leadership banquet is also at the Arc.
Is it, okay.
I'm glad you mentioned, the chili thing is at the Arc, uh, has it ever been there?
No.
It's always been at the St. Robert Community Center.
What time is it?
It starts at eleven, isn't that right? That's where I'm going anyway. So I will be there. Well, no, 'cause I heard some of the things y'all have to do, so I don't want to be part of that. Okay, any questions for Cheryl? All right.
Is, is Fritos and cheese gonna be in there?
Fritos, cheese, jalapenos.
Mm-hmm.
Well, guys, uh, as you know, uh, we did not have a meeting in December, uh, where, uh, Bruce usually gives us the year-end review. And so, we have that this month. And I always enjoy looking at those and looking back at all the projects and things that we did over the year. And so, let's, uh, finish up here with Bruce, your report.
I think I've covered, uh, uh, most of the items in my regular report, we've already covered. I do wanna highlight that we have, uh, last weekend, uh, we, uh, sent electric crew up to Columbia for mutual aid. And there, up there a couple of days, there was about eight, eight thousand people in Columbia out of power. And we're on standby, uh, mutual aid crews throughout the state are on standby for this weekend. As, uh, bad weather's anticipated, so.
Mutual aid is a wonderful thing.
Yes, I think the citizens of Columbia appreciated it.
Yes.
And we would appreciate it if it occurred for, uh, if it occurred here in Waynesville too. So we're hoping that we can, uh, pu- support another, uh, another city and not need to support ourselves.
Right.
And as the mayor mentioned, you know, we've got the year-end review. And, you know, it's, it's, uh, I'm very proud that, you know, working with, uh, the city staff, the American City Council, the Park Board, our volunteers. We, we do accomplish a lot of good things for the city during the year. And just some of the things we're, uh, proud of, we're proud of the new bathroom that we constructed ourselves. We had a lot of, we had some commercial growth, uh, this year, so that was a positive, uh, positive thing for us. We purchased two new water systems, took them over without a hitch in that, without the, people signed up. Uh, no major problems with the, uh, running the, uh, the, those two systems. We hosted Big Band, that was a very successful event for the city. We did a lot of improvements at the airport, as we've mentioned, with the Contour Air. We had a, uh, solid management, uh, grant on recycling. We did pass the use tax, which is a good deal. We made many improvements to our, uh, utility systems. We continued to mitigate the problems in Mitchell Creek by removing gravel, updated personnel manual. Uh, we're standing up COUSA, you know, it's, uh, gonna take over the water wastewater treatment plants on May first. We've already hired, uh, our administrative assistant and, uh, we've, um, we've got the, uh, project manager and assistant project manager locked in. And they're, they're coming on board shortly, so we're moving forward on that. Mike mentioned the progress we've made with the, the. Mike mentioned the progress we've made with the, the natural gas. We think we're, uh, got a better settlement than, than we, than we expected. We did, uh, we did get a new trails grant, so we're gonna start on that this year, but we, we got the grant last year. The animal shelter has really improved their, um, their adoption rates, so we're making some progress there. Uh, the mayor was appointed to the MML Policy Board and Mike received the Public Official Award. And we've made, uh, quite a few, uh, you know, uh, newly elected council people. And, uh, we made some transitions, uh, on the personnel in, in City Hall. Carol retired, Michelle was promoted, we hired Amber, we got Mickey Brown and Aaron on, and Michael Guy as the airport technician to, uh, just mention just a few. So, I think it was a very successful year for the city of Waynesville. We did a lot of, we did a lot of projects. And I will tell you, this year has started out to be very busy today.
With a very tight budget.
Yes.
So, let me, uh, give you some bad news. Uh, I've kind of been touting all over town about, oh, Amber and I went to MRPC about the sidewalk grant and we really thought we had a chance. In fact, we were number two. So, we thought they were gonna take the top three. They did not. They only took one. And we did not get our sidewalk grant. So, I'm very disappointed over that. And in fact, I talked to Bruce the other day and said, we're gonna talk about, are there some stretches of sidewalk that we could go ahead and start ourselves? You know, that don't involve a lot of expense? So, so we'll, we'll look into that. You know, one of my goals was to make Waynesville walkable. I think, uh, when I leave office, what I'll have to just say is, we started the process. And so, we'll see how that goes. Uh, we're going to have council comments here in just a moment. I'll go ahead and do mine since I'm talking. I just have one thing to say, and that is, I want to thank people in our community, uh, school board, city council seats, people who have stepped up to serve in positions that are really kind of thankless most of the time. And I want to say how much you are appreciated. And of course, we have nobody and more than one. And that's very indicative, I think, of, uh, our political climate these days.
Mayor, I'll take both seats.
You'll take both votes with you? Yeah. But I would tell you that, uh, uh, we have worked well together. And it has not been an upsetting experience. And so, I would encourage everybody to think about that. And again, thank you for all of you who do choose to run. And Cheryl, thank you for your service. And Mike, do you have any comments?
Absolutely. We're looking at possible snow event this weekend. Uh, if our salt trucks or gravel trucks are out, our snowblazer necessary, please, when you see those things, uh, being, uh, in the news to, for a weather warning, please move your vehicles out of the streets so that we do not, uh, damage them or our vehicles. It, uh, it's not good for anybody. I appreciate your cooperation in that regard. Also, check on your neighbors. It's, uh, the temperature's supposed to drop out the bottom, uh, here shortly with this, uh, northern express wind, so check on, uh, some of our neighbors, uh, are not as, uh, as, uh, healthy as others.
Very good. Ed?
I really don't have a lot to say. I'm disappointed that people didn't file for some of these offices. You know, people wanted to complain about this and complain about the city doesn't do this or the city doesn't do that. Folks, you need to step up. That's all I can say.
Very good. I noticed in several of our surrounding communities, they also are having the same problem. And in fact, in Richland, nobody signed up for mayor. So, Clarence?
Well, I would like to add, call what Mike had said, and also, I thank Mr. Harold and staff and the city employees. You all make us look good and I appreciate that.
Yes, they do. Thank you.
Jerry, just wanna comment what Clarence said. We have a great staff and they do support us and make us look good.
Very good. Mike?
We're talking about running for city council. Kudos to the citizens of Dixon.
There you go.
Several people stepped up and I think that's great. And go Chiefs.
There you go. I can't believe I didn't say that. Cecil?
Uh, I just wanna say, s, the school kids are back, they're on the roads early in